All right, looks like we're live now. Is that, is that right clerk?
That's right.
Thank you so much. The March 23rd, 2020 meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It is 2 o'clock PM. I'm Lorena Gonzalez, President of the Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbold?
Here.
Councilmember Juarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis? Councilmember Morales?
Here.
Councilmember Musceta?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Sawant?
Here.
Councilmember Strauss?
Present.
Council President Gonzalez?
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you so much clerk. The City of Seattle issued a civil emergency proclamation due to the coronavirus on March 3rd, 2020. Since then, the Governor and Seattle King County Public Health Department have issued recommendations on reducing the spread of this virus. To comply with the recommendations and in the interest of the safety and welfare of the public and our own employees, the Seattle City Council is meeting remotely and participating electronically. The City Council anticipates continuing this practice through March 31st of 2020. Meeting remotely also does not provide the public an opportunity for in-person public comment, and we truly regret that. The City Council is continually available by email. You can all email us at council@seattle.gov. That's council@seattle.gov. This meeting is being broadcasted live on Seattle Channel. You can call the Council Chamber Listen Line at 206-684-8566. This number is also listed on the agenda, and this meeting can also be heard in Council Chambers in person. Though of course, we are discouraging the in-person option again in order to ensure that we are complying strictly with public health officer orders in terms of stopping the spread of this virus. Councilmembers, the Council rules are silent on electronic participation at regular City Council meetings, and the Council will be conducting remote meetings as late as March 31st, 2020. As I mentioned in Council briefing this morning, that could be extended based on information coming out either later today as a result of Governor Inslee's 5:30 PM address to the full state, or other information we obtained from regional health partners. In addition, public comment is not being provided at meetings where the City Council is meeting remotely. To allow the Council to conduct business remotely and without public comment, the Council rules will need to be suspended. So if there is no objection, the Council rules will be suspended to allow Council members to participate electronically at City Council meetings through March 31st, 2020, and to not include public comment at meetings where the Council is participating remotely. Hearing no objection, the Council rules are suspended, and the Council will participate electronically through March 31st, 2020, and public comment will not be on the agendas where the Council is meeting remotely. Thank you, Councilmembers, for indulging me as I go through those important administrative steps before we get into the meat of our agenda. Our first section is presentations. I'm not aware of any presentations today, so I'll move on to the approval of the minutes. The minutes of the special City Council meeting of March 5th and City Council meeting of March 9th, 2020 have been reviewed. If there is no objection, the minutes will be signed. Hearing no objections, the minutes are being signed, and I will ask that the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes. We will move on now to the adoption of the referral of the calendar, excuse me, adoption of the referral calendar. If there is no objection, the introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. We will now move to the approval of the agenda. If there is no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Okay, payment of bills. Will the clerk please read the title?
Yes, Council President, just a quick second. Council Bill 119759, appropriate amount to pay asserted audit claims for the week of March 9th, 2020 through March 13th, 2020, ordering the payment thereof.
Thank you. I move to pass Council Bill 119759.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the bill pass. Are there any comments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Herbold?
Aye.
Councilmember Juarez?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Councilmember Musceta?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Sawant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes and the Chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? All right, we'll go ahead and begin with committee reports. Agenda item one, will the clerk please read Agenda item one into the record?
Agenda item one, report of the City Council, Bill 119760, amendment 126000, which adopted the 2020 budget, changing appropriations to the Executive Department's Office of Housing, the Executive Department's Office of Economic Development, and budget control levels, and from various funds in the budget for the purpose of providing financial assistance to small businesses, and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts.
Thank you. I'm going to move to pass Council Bill 119760.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. This bill is sponsored by Councilmember Morales. Would you like to address this bill?
Sure. I'm off mute. Okay, thank you, Council President Gonzalez. This is a bill we referenced last week. This would add another approximately $1 million to the Office of Economic Development for the purpose of expanding the business stabilization, Small Business Stabilization Fund. I know there are some colleagues who are concerned that this is shifting money from the low-income housing fund in the Office of Housing. My understanding is that the Office of Housing plans to do two NOFAs and that there will be an additional opportunity for funding for housing in the fall. And while I completely understand the struggle, and this is probably the first event that we're going to have to balance how we make adjustments to our plans during this crisis, you know, it's important that we support small business, and certainly shouldn't be pitting them against any housing production that we're going to be doing. And we know that we have very limited options as a city for how we support small business, and community development block grant money is one of our very few options. So I am going to, we support this bill so that we can expand the support for businesses through the Business Stabilization Fund. I do want to say, if I might, as I've said many times already during this crisis, we need to be aware of, you know, that we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul during this crisis, and also that as we, as we look to these emergency measures that we're taking, that we aren't creating new systems that might perpetuate inequities in our community. That said, I do think that it's important that we proceed with this bill.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Are there any comments on the bill?
Council President Gonzalez, this is Councilmember Musceta.
Please, the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thanks to the prime sponsor for bringing this forward along with the Mayor's Office for sending it down. I want to reiterate a few points that were made. In conversations with the Office of Housing, we have been able to confirm that the redirection of the CDBG funds will not hurt any existing housing projects. And we will continue to be vigilant, along with our partners in the Mayor's Office, as we move forward, to make sure that there is sufficient funding for housing. But the roughly $1 million in redirection will not affect any of our currently funded projects. I want to thank the Office of Housing for their opportunity to engage with us and make sure that we plan for affordable housing projects to move forward, that there's not any negative impacts as we think about the emergency that's in front of us, especially as we think about how important it is for folks to have access to housing and affordable housing in the near future. When and if this virus continues in the fall and winter, we want to make sure that these housing projects continue and that there's funding allocated this year and next year to moving forward on these important housing projects. I think that we talked a little bit about it this morning and have talked repeatedly about how the COVID pandemic has made affordable housing production even more critical, and it really is our only long-term strategy for creating affordable housing and stability. So as we ramp up our sheltering capacity and we think about immediate assessment facilities that we're going to stand up soon, having equal amount of emphasis on building affordable housing is going to be critical. So I want to thank the Mayor's Office and Budget Office for helping to explain the budget impacts of this decision, and I think overall, to echo what Councilmember Morales said, we want to make sure that the COVID crisis, when it means loss of revenue coming in the door, that we do protect funding for critical services, including affordable housing, as we think about reallocating funding. I think this is a good use of these funds, and appreciate the effort to get these dollars out the door for our smallest businesses.
Thank you, Councilmember Musceta. Are there any other comments on the bill?
Council President Gonzalez?
Okay, so I heard two people, Councilmember Herbold and Councilmember Sawant. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Herbold, I heard your voice first, so I'm going to let you go first, and then I'll call on Councilmember Sawant.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate knowing that this transfer of funds from the Office of Housing will not impact any current funding commitment that the Office of Housing has made to our affordable housing projects, and appreciate knowing that the Office of Housing estimates at this time that they'll have $57 million to allocate to new housing projects in need of funding. And I of course understand that CDBG funds can uniquely support the business assistance program, as other city and state funds cannot be used to provide this assistance due to constitutional limitations. We know that COVID-19 will put pressure on many thousands of households who will be out of work or underemployed and struggling to make ends meet, as well as pressures on the affordable housing providers who have very tight margins to keep people housed. I did reach out to the Housing Development Consortium this weekend. They are supportive of this legislation, but I think we need to assume that housing must be a key component of the city's response to COVID-19. And I don't want to regret these kinds of transfers away from the Office of Housing. We know that the Washington Low Income Housing Alliance has made a request of the Governor's Office that should any future shelters in place orders be instituted, that housing production be considered an essential opportunity and be permitted to continue. In addition to the housing, affordable housing projects that are already planned, it seems very likely that we may have emergency housing-related needs where future CDBG funds could be an important fund source. We've checked in with the city's CDBG administrator. We know that emergency housing and shelter is an eligible CDBG activity. It is defined as a public service. We are limited on how much CDBG dollars we can spend on a public service such as emergency housing or shelter. We are only permitted to spend 35.92% of our total CDBG grant on public services, and it has been our policy as a city to spend those dollars towards emergency shelter. So as I understand it, that 36% has already been contracted out for 2020, but our CDBG administrator indicates that Congress may be working on statutory relief to temporarily remove the cap on public services for CDBG. We will be kept updated on the progress on this, but what this means is we may have the ability to use more CDBG funds for emergency shelter and emergency housing-related needs related to COVID-19. And so I think this important conversation that we're having now about striking the right balance between all of these competing needs is really critical to the Council and the city's ability to be fair and meet those needs.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Councilwoman Sawant?
Thank you, President Gonzalez. I have concerns about this bill from the mayor, and I have the concern not only about this bill, but that the concern I'm going to express that it's going to start becoming a pattern from the emergency orders that come forward, and that it will be an ongoing issue. And I have shared my concerns with Councilmember Morales in advance, but I wanted to share them here and then also explain what I intend to do with this bill today in terms of the vote. Yes, we all agree it funds relief for small businesses, which I absolutely support. In fact, it was my office along with community members that we were able to fight for businesses in the Central District a couple of years ago and win $650,000. That was unprecedented for really struggling people of color-owned businesses that we were able to win through organizing. And so there's no question that small businesses are struggling, as well as the vast majority of working people who are reeling from this crisis. However, this bill would pay for small businesses by cutting the low-income housing fund, and I oppose that cut. I agree with Councilmembers who've said it's accurate that it does not come from currently planned project. That is true, but it takes away from the next round of projects, the projects of the 2020 that will come under the 2020 Notice of Funding Availability. My office has checked thoroughly with City Council Central staff, and they estimate that if this million dollars, if the fund, you know, housing funds are not made whole, this could cost 10 individual families, individuals or families affordable homes to live in during this crisis. That's concrete, that's a concrete loss that could happen if we did not actually take care, and I don't understand why we have to do that when there's actually a lot of money in this city, it's just in the hands of the wealthy and big business. Now, it would be reasonable to ask whether the affordable housing construction was being suspended right now in accordance with social distancing guidelines or shelter in place that is being anticipated, but we know the Notice of Funding Availability has gone out as planned. So either it will affect the scheduled affordable housing for this year, or it will not affect this year, but it will affect, you know, in an ongoing basis. But my point is that regardless of whether this million dollars comes from the spring or fall NOFA, and regardless of whether or not construction was suspended, the fundamental problem here that I'm objecting to is the robbing Peter to pay Paul approach that is going to be used by the mayor. I am anticipating that more emergency orders of this kind, and the Council needs to take action. But I think all of this is being done in order to avoid taking on big business, so that we, and so we have the perpetuation of this politics of scarcity, which I don't accept. Both struggling small businesses and working families need to be supported, and their needs should not be pitted against each other. The City of Seattle has an emergency fund of $66 million that is reserved explicitly for emergencies like this, and we should use emergency funds rather than cutting funding for affordable housing. And Councilmembers may argue that the emergency fund will have many other demands on it, which of course is going to be true, but we know that $66 million can only scratch the surface of what is needed to support our community at this moment. I mean, we are in a pandemic that is going to result not only in completely preventable loss of life due to the criminal privatized healthcare system, but we're going to have depression-like economic effects with the Fed estimating 30% unemployment rate in the second quarter. I mean, that is devastating. So we, you know, that is why Councilmember Morales and I put forward the Amazon tax, but even that is not going to be enough. The city needs to use the emergency fund for immediate needs. It needs to immediately approve the Amazon tax to make additional funding available, and we need to demand that the state also act by closing corporate tax loopholes and passing big business and taxes on the wealthy at the state level. My office checked with the Central staff about possibly amending the bill to change the source of funding to be the emergency fund, but because that would require a title change, it cannot legally be done in the same bill. That is why if Councilmember Morales or any other Councilmember were to make a motion to hold this bill from a vote today, I would support that motion, or I will make that motion if no other Councilmember makes it. And I don't, I wouldn't agree if Councilmembers are going to say that that's such a motion holds up emergency relief. I do not agree with that. Today, the Council could pass an Amazon tax and make relief available, so I don't accept that, I wouldn't accept that excuse on its face value, but I will make that motion if nobody else is going to make it. And if the motion gets a majority vote, then we could easily put forward a replacement bill to use emergency funding funds. And if there is agreement, my office is happy to rapidly put this together. I know there are concerns that have been expressed that the funds need to be community development block grant money in order to legally be used for this purpose, and emergency fund does not come from CDBG. We all know that it is easily solved by using CDBG money from any other part of the budget and backfilling it with emergency funds. And I will use the guidance of the Council President and the city clerk to make that motion, but I also wanted to say that if this bill goes ahead today, I unfortunately feel I have to vote no on it for the reasons I have just explained. We cannot adequately address this extraordinary crisis by simply shifting the damage back and forth between working people and small businesses. We need a fundamentally different approach.
Excuse me, thank you, Councilwoman Sawant. Unfortunately, I think your intention to hold the bill would be out of order. This bill has been moved and seconded and is now in the discussion phase. If there was an interest in your part to move to hold the bill, I believe that that should have been done consistent with the Council rules at the time that we were considering approval of the agenda. Will the city clerk please clarify that, my understanding of the rules of order here?
Yes, Councilmember, just give me a quick second so I can get my little cheat sheet out, but I believe the, the motion to hold has a higher, it's a higher motion, and so therefore it takes precedence over the motion to pass the bill right now. So a motion to hold could be changed, and if it fails, then we can go back to the motion to pass the bill.
Okay. So Councilwoman Sawant, if you intend to make a motion to hold this bill, now would be the time to do that. It would require, I think, a second and then a majority of the City Council to pass. Is that correct, Amelia?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not sure exactly the words Amelia wants me to use, but I will say I make the motion to hold Council Bill 119760.
And Councilwoman Sawant, are you proposing to hold it for a date certain or to hold it indefinitely?
Obviously, it's not indefinite in my mind, but I don't want to specify a date because I'm not exactly sure whether this will be done in a week or not, but obviously the, needless to say, the intention would be to do it, work on it as soon as possible.
Council President?
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind, so our Council rules provide that to hold something needs to be held for a certain time, as far as a specific date, meeting, or hour, until when the actual item will be taken back by the Council.
Okay, in that case, I, sorry.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Sawant. No, go ahead, please.
No, I think I heard Amelia say that I need to attach a date to my motion.
That's what I heard, yes.
Okay, in that case, I will make the motion to hold the bill until the City Council meeting of March 30th.
Okay, there's been a motion to hold Council Bill 119760 until the full Council meeting on March 30th. Is there a second? Okay, hearing no second, the motion fails for a lack of a second. So we will now move on to continue discussion of the previous motion that was made, which was a motion that was moved and seconded to pass, Council Bill 119760. I can appreciate the concerns that were expressed by all of the other Council members, including Councilwoman Sawant, and I understand that we want to make sure that as we are considering these emergency funding sources, that we are doing so in the full context of making sure that we are not sort of engaging in mission creep, if you will, where we are taking from other priorities to address the needs of the emergency response as it relates to the coronavirus. Unfortunately, there will be situations, I think, where we will need to make some intentional transparent decisions that might require reallocation of funds, either in the short term or the long term. And I think, you know, it is prudent for us to have a conversation with the executive and with the guidance of our Council Central staff and the Chair of the Finance and Housing Committee to make sure that we have a clear understanding of where those lines are drawn. I do want to address sort of the issue around small businesses and the intersection between that and affordable housing. Several of us have already spoken to that. I want to clarify that it's my understanding that one of the largest housing, nonprofit housing consortiums, the Housing Development Consortium, does support this proposed Small Business Stabilization Fund and the legislation to expand that fund. They have indicated in an email to Councilmember Herbold dated March 23rd at 1:48 PM that their, quote, "Anti-displacement policy position calls for support of locally-owned small businesses with tools that would allow them to thrive in their communities. We understand the inextricable link between small business livelihood and the ability of residents to pay rent or mortgage payments and remain housed, which is of paramount concern to HDC members. Now more than ever, we call for compassionate support that keeps us a strong community." Close quote. So I think it's important for us to take that into consideration with the understanding that they support the bill, knowing that it's not going to take away from existing projects, and really sort of making sure that we understand that this bill is specifically not in contravention to some of the housing interests we have, but is in fact something that is going to continue to promote this Council's priority around ongoing future affordable housing opportunities. We certainly could use more in that regard and look forward to seeing the federal and state resources coming through that allow us to leverage future affordable housing projects through the Office of Housing to make sure that we are meeting the dire housing needs of so many in our city that certainly existed before this crisis and, you know, as I think many of us are nervous about, might be exacerbated as a result of this crisis. So Councilmembers, any other individuals have comments on this? Otherwise, I will allow the prime sponsor to make closing remarks, and I will call this to a vote. Okay, hearing none, Councilmember Morales, do you have any other comments to make on the bill before I ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage of the bill?
I'll just say that, well, as we've all said, it's important that we support these small businesses. You know, this is one of the few, CDBG funding is one of the few sources that we have, and many of these small businesses that we're supporting with this fund are themselves low-income folks who are dealing with, you know, all the same issues, rental issues, being able to provide for their families. And so the assistance that this provides them is going to be really important, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Okay, I will go ahead and ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Councilmember Herbold?
Aye.
Councilmember Juarez?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Councilmember Musceta?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Sawant?
No.
Councilmember Strauss?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
The bill passes and the Chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? All right, we're going to go ahead and move to the next agenda item. Will the clerk please read Agenda item two into the record?
Agenda item two, Appointment 1559, Appointment of Scott Boffler as member, Community Police Commission for Chairman to December 31st, 2022.
Thank you. I move to confirm Appointment 1559.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to confirm the appointment. Councilmember Herbold, as the prime sponsor of the appointment, would you like to address it first?
I would, thank you. I would, thank you. Mr. Bachelor is being appointed by the Community Police Commission. Mr. Bachelor is the CPC's appointment for the Seattle Police Management Association. The CPC's members voted to appoint him. He has been serving unofficially for some time. This action would make his appointment official. There are four CPC positions specifically designated. One is for the Seattle Police Management Association. My office checked with the CPC and asked if they were approving with this approach in the absence of committee meetings, and they support this. Mr. Bachelor has been with SPD since 1989. He is a lieutenant. He has served in a variety of positions, including as a detective, a watch commander in the South, Southwest, and East precincts, and commander of training. He is the president of the Seattle Police Management Association. The CPC has seven appointments. Four are specifically designated, one for the Seattle Police Guild, one for the Seattle Management Association, and two to serve public defense and civil rights interests.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Are there any comments or questions on the appointment? Okay, hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the appointment?
Councilmember Herbold?
Aye.
Councilmember Juarez?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Don't make a mess in the garage. Oh, sorry, aye.
Councilmember Musceta?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Sawan?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss? Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. Just before we move on, I want to make sure that we still have Councilmember Strauss on the line with us. Councilmember Strauss, if you're speaking, you might be muted. We cannot hear you. Might have lost him. So I will go ahead and finalize the vote here. The motion carries and the appointment is confirmed. Will the clerk please read Items 3 and 4 together?
Council President?
Yes.
This is Councilmember Strauss. I got dropped from the call. If possible, I vote aye on that last appointment. I was calling along on Seattle Channel.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Clerk, is it, I would ask Madam Clerk, is it allowed for the record to reflect Councilmember Strauss's vote in the affirmative?
Councilmember Gonzalez, in situations like this, we normally request that the vote be reconsidered by reconsidering the appointment, and therefore after we consider that appointment, then we can take the roll call again.
Whatever the council president, I don't mind either way.
That's fine. Let's go ahead, and I will move to reconsider the confirmation of Appointment 1559.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to reconsider the confirmation of Appointment 1559. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the appointment, on the, excuse me, the reconsideration of the confirmation of the appointment?
Herbold?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis? Morales?
Aye.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawan?
Aye.
Strauss?
Aye, thank you.
President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Okay, the motion carries and the appointment is confirmed. Will the clerk please read Agenda Items 3 and 4?
Council President Gonzalez, I'm sorry. At this point, we would just request that we do one more roll call, which would be the vote for of the Appointment 1559.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of Appointment 1559?
Councilmember Herbold?
Aye.
Councilmember Juarez?
Oh, God, aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Councilmember Musceta?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Sawan?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries and the appointment is confirmed, and it's probably a good opportunity to say how much we all love Robert's Rules of Order. All right, let's read Items 3 and 4 into the agenda.
Agenda Items 3 and 4, Appointments 1572 and 1573, Appointment to Wilford Harriston as member of Seattle Public Library Board of Trustees for term to April 1st, 2023, and Appointment to Carmen A. Ben Dixon as member of Seattle Public Library Board of Trustees for term to April 1st, 2025.
Thank you. I move to confirm Appointments 1572 and 1573. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to confirm the appointments. Councilmember Juarez, I'm going to hand it over to you as the sponsor of these appointments for you to address them and bring us home.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, everybody, for your patience and also allowing our committee to have this extraordinary measure of moving forward on these two appointments to the Public Library Board of Trustees. I'll start with Mr. Harriston Wilford. This is an appointment to the Seattle Public Library Board of Trustees to conform Wilford Harriston's appointment to a term until April 1st, 2023. Mr. Harriston, otherwise known as Tally, is a lifelong Seattle resident and Seattle Public School graduate. He is the director of community organizing, advocacy, and development at Seattle Presbytry. He enjoys the work of integrating equality and equity and inclusion into performance-based outcomes and community engagement. He has 17 years of experience with higher education, and his doctoral studies include equity in education and public policy in promoting inclusive learning frameworks. Tally is a District 2 constituent. He has a wealth of experience and a commitment to equity and inclusion, which is vital for the health and integrity of a library system to serve all and especially our most vulnerable communities. I have reviewed this application and support its candidacy. Council President, would you like me to move on to Agenda Item 4?
I would. It would be great if you could address them together.
Okay. This is for Carmen Ben Dixon. Carmen has been a volunteer with the Seattle Public Library and the Friends of the Seattle Public Library since 2007. Carmen's day job is with Washington State Department of Transportation as a senior transportation planner. Her experiences as a volunteer and former president of the Friends of the Seattle Public Library Board has exposed her to the dynamic and supportive literary arts scene in the region. She's passionate about books and literature and is eager to contribute to the advancement of the Seattle Public Library. Carmen is a District 3 constituent. I have reviewed her application and support Carmen's candidacy. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Juarez, for those remarks. Are there any other comments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the appointments?
Councilmember Herbold?
Aye.
Councilmember Juarez?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Councilmember Musceta?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Sawan?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries and the appointments are confirmed. That concludes the substantive business portion of our agenda for today. Is there any other further business to come before the council? Hearing none, this concludes our agenda for March 23rd, 2020. Our next meeting will be on Monday, March 30th, at 2:00 PM, our really scheduled time. That's all, folks. We are adjourned. Thank you so much, and stay safe and healthy out there.
Thank you.